Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number six is Extension of Premise for the Museum of Wisconsin Art Incorporated for Vintage to be held on July 14th, 2018 from 4:30 PM through 11 o'clock PM at the Museum of Wisconsin Art, 205 Veterans Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item seven is Extension of Premise for Museum of Wisconsin Art Incorporated for the Art and Chalk Fest to be held on July 28th and 29th, 2018 at the Museum of Wisconsin Art, 205 Veterans Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number eight is an Extension of Premise for the West Bend Moose Lodge for the Moose Lodge Car Show being held on Saturday, May 26th, 2018 from 6:00 AM through 6:00 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number nine is an Extension of Premise for the West Bend Moose Lodge for the Moose Lodge Moose-a-thon, the West Bend Moose Lodge Moose-a-thon Brat Fry being held on Friday, June 15th, 2018 to Saturday, June 16th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. The extension of premise will be Friday, June 15th from 4:00 to 11:00 PM and Saturday, June 16th from 8:00 AM through 6:00 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number 10 is an Extension of Premise for the West Bend Moose Lodge for the Kettle Moraine Classic Car Club Car Show being held on June 24th from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 11 is Approval of the Operator's Licenses listed in our packets.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 12 is Temporary Class B Beer and Wine License for the Habitat for Humanity of Washington and Dodge Counties Incorporated for West Bend German Fest.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 13 is a Class B Beer and Wine License for the West Bend Noon Kiwanis Club for the West Bend Kiwana Steak Fry in the Park on June 19th, 2018 from 4:30 to 9 o'clock PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 14 is Amusement Arcade License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 15 is Coins and Precious Metals or Stone Dealer Licenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, Steve. Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 16 is Massage Establishment License Renewal, May 21st, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 17 is Secondhand Article Dealer License Renewal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 18 is Secondhand Jewelry Dealer License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 19 Tattoo and Body Piercing Establishment License Renewal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And Steve, if you could handle items 20 and 21 for me as I have a conflict.
Item 20, Class A Combination License Renewal for Wisconsin Convenience Store Management LLC Barton Sitco.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side, motion carries. Item 21, Class A Combination License Renewal, Wisconsin Convenience Store Management LLC, Wingate Creek Park BP.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side, motion carries.
Thanks, Steve. Item 22 is Class A Combination License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 24 is Class B Combination License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 25 is Class B Combination Reserve License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 26 is a Class C Wine License Renewal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And being there, no further business before the Licensing Board, I adjourn. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, May 21st, 2018 to order and recognize that we do have a quorum of aldermen with aldermen kissed, absent, and excused. We'd just like to jump ahead to item number 30, West Bend Police Department Police Officer Awards. We have a presentation tonight by Chief of Police Ken Moiler, who's walking up to the mic, and others.
Good evening. Our 2018 Officer Awards, our first award is Sergeant Nick Wenzel and Detective Tim McCarthy. Let's go up by the chief. On April 25th, 2017, an Arizona resident called the department to request help locating her recently stolen work truck. The woman explained the truck had been stolen in Arizona and its GPS feature was indicating it was now in West Bend. The woman further stated that she had contacted several other agencies between Arizona and West Bend, and none were either able to locate the vehicle or, if located, hold it. Sergeant Wenzel located the vehicle and detained the driver, who indicated he had recently purchased the vehicle and claimed to be a victim. Sergeant Wenzel utilized his investigation and past work experience as a mechanic to locate several switched identifying numbers and realized the driver's story was not adding up. Detective McCarthy was assigned to the case and together, the two began to dig in and realized what could have been written off as a simple stolen vehicle recovery was actually a larger national car theft ring. While continuing to research, Sergeant Wenzel and Detective McCarthy located evidence of additional thefts, developed informant information, and were ultimately able to obtain a search warrant with the State Patrol to recover three additional stolen vehicles in Adams County. Sergeant Wenzel and Detective McCarthy's actions in this case demonstrate their consistent attention to detail, thoroughness, and commitment to the department and community. Due to their efforts, numerous additional auto thefts were prevented. Congratulations. Second award is Officer Thomas Lichtensteiger. Thomas is receiving a Meritorious Service Award as well. On October 10th, 2017, the Enchantment in the Park Christmas Light Display in Regner Park was intentionally damaged, causing nearly $4,000 in damage. Normal investigative steps were unable to develop any suspects, and it appeared the case would go unsolved. Over the past several years, Officer Lichtensteiger has made a conscious effort to develop relationships with the community youth, who routinely utilize the skate park, frequent our downtown area, and our place at the Youth Treatment Center. By leveraging those relationships, Officer Lichtensteiger was able to develop information on a suspect and the damage. Tom located the suspect, obtained a confession, and developed information which resulted in the arrest of two additional involved individuals. Tom's actions demonstrate the importance of community policing, developing relationships, and just good old-fashioned police work. Congratulations. The third award is a Distinguished Service Medal going to Officer Chad Kohler. Unfortunately, Officer Kohler couldn't join us tonight. While assigned to the Washington County Multi-Jurisdictional Drug Unit, Officer Kohler received reports of a large drug gang operating out of the Campbellport area. Officer Kohler developed and managed multiple informants, all of whom indicated the gang was responsible for supplying heroin, opioids to a large number of West Bend and Washington County residents. Over a years-long investigation involving multiple jurisdictions, state resources, and many hours of covert operations, Officer Kohler developed enough evidence to secure the arrest and eventual guilty pleas of eight co-defendants. Officer Kohler's actions shut down a large supplier of drugs to our community. Officer Kohler's actions were recognized by the State Department of Justice, the Washington County District Attorney Office, and now our department. Congratulations, Officer Kohler. And our final award goes again to Officer Kohler and Officer Kent Vole. Officer Kohler and Officer Vole will be receiving a Life Saving Medal. On March 25th, 2018, Officers Vole and Kohler were dispatched to report of a 16-year-old girl who had collapsed and was not breathing. Officers Vole and Kohler located the girl in an upstairs bedroom and immediately began life-saving efforts, including CPR and the utilization of an Automated External Defibrillator, or an AED. After the Automated External Defibrillator issued one shock, the officers continued to perform CPR until the West Bend Fire Department arrived and were able to stabilize the girl. The Fire Department was able to provide advanced life-saving measures and treat the girl and transport her to the hospital, where she has since made a full recovery. The treating doctors made it a point to comment that the officer's quick actions clearly made the difference in the outcome of this medical event. Officers Vole and Kohler's actions clearly saved the life of the 16-year-old girl. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations, officers, and thank you for the work you continue to do, clearly going above and beyond. We certainly appreciate it as a community. With that, I'd like to recess the Common Council meeting.
I would like to now call the Order of the Board of Public Works. We have six items on the agenda tonight, the first being the Approval of Minutes from the regular meeting on May 7th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion at all? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries. Second item, Request by the Museum of Wisconsin Art to close and use Veterans Avenue from 6:00 AM on July 28th, 2018 through 6:00 PM on July 29th, 2018 for Art and Chalk Fest. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion at all? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries. Number three, Request by Habitat for Humanity to close and use the city-owned parking lot at the northwest corner of South Fifth Avenue and Walnut Street, the length of South Fifth Avenue between Walnut Street and Main Street and the north side of Walnut Street from the south of Fifth Avenue to the alley located to the west of German Fest, from 6:00 AM on August 22nd, 2018 through 6:00 PM on August 27th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, Grant of Privilege Agreement for 1613 West Washington, with a presentation by Max Marshall. Max?
Good evening. Thank you. Tonight, we have this item, to approve a grant of privilege for Tri-Power Oil Company to install a temporary monitoring well within the right-of-way on Washington Street along their property at 1613 West Washington Street. The installation of the temporary well is necessary as part of an investigation mandated by the DNR to delineate the extent of some soil and groundwater contamination with gasoline and petroleum hydrocarbon that was detected in the area. This grant of privilege is our standard agreement with some details specific to the project that we've done in the past for this type of improvement in the right-of-way. And so, we would recommend that the board and council approve the agreement. I have attached the original document for signatures.
Any questions for Max? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion at all? All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries. Number five, Agreement for Improvement Within Easement at 1626 Beverly Lane. Max?
Thank you again. This is to the request from Scott and Kelly Lewandowski, the property owners at 1626 Beverly Lane. There is an existing storm sewer easement crossing their property, and they would like to fence, to install a fence around their property in order to keep some dogs in their backyard. And so, they're asking for permission to have that fence cross the easement that we have. I looked at it, and the easement is for an existing storm sewer pipe, so we're concerned more with underground drainage in the pipe. There is no concern with surface drainage there, so I would recommend approving this agreement with them. There are some conditions on maintenance of the fence, or if we ever need to go in and repair the pipe, the property owner would be responsible for removing the fence so we can proceed with that. All these details are in the agreement. They already signed it, and I have included the original for our signature.
All right. Thanks, Max. Any question? Yeah, John?
Max, if they do not remove it and there is some repairs be taken care of with the city, then we be responsible to remove the fence and charge, bill them for the time?
Well, the language in the agreement specifies that if they don't remove it, then we have the right to remove it, to proceed with our repairs or maintenance, whatever we might be doing. But then, all the repair after that would be at their charge, their responsibility.
All right. Thank you, Max.
Anyone else, or I'll entertain a motion?
I've got a question.
Yeah, Justice?
Does that contract move on to the next homeowner when they sell?
Yes, absolutely. The document, the agreement that we have with them, would be recorded at the county, and it would bind future owners so that if they sell the property, then the future owners would be bound by that same agreement.
Same contract. Okay. Great. Thanks, Max.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All those signify, please by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Award Contract 18-08, Water Utility Pavement Repairs at Various Locations. Max?
Thank you again. This is the annual contract that we've been doing to address pavement repairs due to emergency water utility repairs. So, we would go and repair the pipe, either some laterals or some main pipes leaks in the system, et cetera, and then we hire a contractor to fix the pavement afterwards and install those patches. We've been doing the contract for a few years, and we received bids on Tuesday, May 8th. We received three bids, and the low bidder is TP Concrete from Freedonia. And we've reviewed the qualifications. They have done a ton of work in the city, so, especially in past contracts for this same item. So, we believe they are capable of doing the work, and we recommend Award of Contract 1808 in the amount of $58,200 to TP Concrete at the unit prices specified in their bid proposal. We also recommend a full contingency, as allowed by statute, of 15% of the total bid. It's higher than what we usually ask for because we don't know how many repairs we would deal with through the season, and we want to be able to cover as many of them under this contract. Obviously, we will only spend what we really need based on the instances that we have with water main breaks and things like that. So, we would ask for a total allocation not to exceed $66,930 for this project.
All right. Thanks, Max. Any questions?
Max, I hate to put you on the spot. I've noticed that all the areas that the water main breaks had been through throughout the winter, I noticed that the water department squared off all those things and cut them Is that the reason that the costs, the costs here between the three are just unbelievable? I can't believe that we got such a difference in the price, but that's a great price by concrete, TP concrete. But is that normal now that the water department squares it off for them, cuts it out, and all they have to do is just come in and remove it and then just put down the blacktop?
Yes, that's what we've been doing for a few years. We've used that process because that we found that it is the most efficient for us as far as getting a smaller amount of asphalt or concrete on site. I had the same reaction when I saw the cost, but I have to say that I looked at the unit prices in all the contracts, and I can see that the concrete prices that we have for TP concrete and the asphalt prices fall within the expected range. I'm looking at the other contractors, and they're out of town. They do not have contracts in town, at least not with the city, whereas TP Concrete already working on some of our contracts. So, I believe a lot of this is mobilization, because TP Concrete being here, in this repair contract, we have a clause that they have to go, and once we say, "Please repair this section," they have a certain number of days to get there. They're already in town. It's easy for them to cover this and meet our requirement, whereas there's other companies that are out of town on other jobs. It might be more difficult, and that's probably why. At least, I think it's part of the reason why there is such a discrepancy in the prices.
Yep. That makes a lot of sense. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
I was just gonna piggyback off the price difference, too. I mean, did Burbach, did they include anything else that the other two didn't, or you think it's just the units, really?
I think it's just the unit prices when I analyze all the bids. That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
I don't know. I've noticed that some contractors would come and bid on some of our jobs. It seems to me, I could be wrong, that happened before. It seems to me that sometimes they have a number of bids to do for the year. If they get 20 jobs, maybe they need to put in 50 bids. And sometimes, they come in and they put a high bid just to say, "I put a bid here," but they don't really want the job, and if they want it, they want to make a lot of money. So, sometimes, that could play in the game as well.
Good to know. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? All right. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
With that, I adjourn the Board of Public Works. Thanks, Andrew. I'd like to call the May 21st Finance Committee to order. We have four items on the agenda. Item number one is the Minutes of the Meeting from May 7th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Item number two is to approve a six-month contract extension, AECOM Schuster Drive Landfill Monitoring, presentation by Doug Newman, Director of Public Works. Good evening, Doug.
Good evening. I am here tonight seeking approval for a six-month contract extension for our landfill monitoring services provided by AECOM. Our current contract expires June 30th of this year. Our recommendation to extend this contract is based on the ongoing efforts between the city and AECOM, seeking approval of monitoring changes by the DNR. Our progress has been moving in a positive direction and will result in less monitoring costs for the future. AECOM has a clear understanding of the city's desire to reduce long-term costs and continues to aid in reducing the monitoring costs whenever possible. In 2017, we were able to obtain DNR approval to reduce the gas monitoring from monthly to weekly, I'm sorry, other way around, weekly to monthly, along with eliminating the need to burn the landfill gas with use of the flare. In 2018, our efforts are focused on seeking approval for the groundwater monitoring changes. This process has already begun and should be presented to the DNR before the end of the year. For these reasons, we are recommending a six-month contract extension and will seek a new contract for 2000, for the beginning of 2018, 2019 through an RFP process with the anticipated changes approved by the DNR. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Doug. So, if we go ahead with the six-month, is the anticipation that we'll get to even less than monthly monitoring in 2019? Or are we gonna continue on a monthly monitoring?
Right now, the gas monitoring has just changed from the weekly to the monthly. Now, we're concentrating on the groundwater monitoring, trying to get that reduced and some wells abandoned. There will be other costs involved with the DNR's approval, but these are proactive costs. Basically, to make it short, if we have a well that needs to be abandoned, if it's working and operating, it's about a $2,500 cost, and if it's not, you know, we're upwards of $20,000 or higher. So, we want to be proactive because spend the money wisely. So, this is why we've been working with the DNR when, right in the middle of this, and this is why we're asking for the extension at this time.
Yes, John?
So, I think you partially answered my question. So, this isn't something that we're legally bound to do. You're just doing it as kind of preventative maintenance? Is that what it sounds like?
As far as the contract or the monitoring changes?
As far as continuing to do this, the monitoring?
The monitoring at the city's landfill is at least another 30-year process. So, these are expected costs. What we're trying to do is reduce the amount of monitoring, which initially, you know, will reduce the cost. If we can reduce the amount of monitoring, we have to do. If that makes sense?
I think so.
The contract has been going down every year, so.
I got two questions, Doug. Now, if we're gonna be, and we've been doing some of it, the monitoring of gas extractions already by monthly?
Yes.
Okay. Have we received any complaints, or have you received any complaints from the neighborhood regarding methane traveling out by reducing it from weekly to monthly?
No. To answer your question, we just had our inspection by the DNR onsite, and one of the changes that we were able to do was we no longer have to burn the gas, so the gas can be vented directly to the atmosphere, which helps considerably because we don't have to go out there and light the flare. It's on a timer now, so it burns, I believe it's eight hours on, 16 off right now. And that was one of the questions the DNR had asked, if we had, because of these changes and we're not burning, if we have gotten any complaints, and we have gotten zero complaints.
Okay. That's good to hear. And that's great to hear that that flare is finally not needed. Way back, I remember that flare cost the city tons of money for repairs just to keep it operating. Obviously, we did reduce to a smaller flare, but now that we don't need it, this is all is starting to look better. And to hear that those wells that you're talking about, the DNR is asking that need to be abandoned, are those wells that are outside the landfill that they're requesting abandonment of?
Some of them are. That's why we're going through the process now of determining which ones need to be, or which ones we think they'll allow us to abandon. And then, we approach the DNR with a site plan modification, and then they say yes or no, and then we can move forward with that.
Okay.
The concentrations of gas have gone much lower now that the flare does have trouble burning to begin with, so that's why we did seek that option, so.
I'm just happy to see that the landfill is finally starting to settle down and not costing us so much money, because that landfill definitely has cost the city a ton of money so far. Glad to see it finally settling down. Thanks, Doug.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any other comments or questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Being any other further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Item number three is to entertain a motion to adjourn in a closed session pursuant to state statutes, section nineteen point eight five, section one sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session memorandum of understanding, Regner Park Baseball Field.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Stephanie, you want to take a roll call?
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Christian?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Madow?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We will be returning back here from closed session. Having a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
Thanks, Rich. Like to reconvene the Common Council meeting. I'll take up item number one, approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of May seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Motion to approve?
A motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Items two through twenty-nine are under the consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number thirty, we handled a little bit earlier this evening. Item number thirty-one is applications for an available non-reserve original Class B combination liquor license. Stephanie, is that what you described earlier?
Yes, it is.
So the one we chose, did the best job of completing the forms and figuring out why they should be awarded the license?
Yes. The company tapped, had filled out the application guidelines that are required by municipal code in a new concept, a business concept. We also received a completed guidelines from Ion and also from Long Branch.
Gotcha.
Or it's Maple Road LLC. I'm not sure what the name of that business will be.
Licensing Board's recommendation is TAP apostrophe D, right?
D, that's correct.
SNL, all right. And that is item, so item number thirty-one was just the presentation. Thirty-two is a decision regarding a non-reserve applicant's guideline response.
Motion to approve a non-reserve Class B combination license for tapped.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And Steve, if you could handle items thirty-three and thirty-four for me.
Item thirty-three, Class A combination license renewal for Wisconsin Convenience Store Management LLC, Barton Sitco.
Motion to approve? Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Item thirty-four, Class A combination license renewal, Wisconsin Convenience Store Management LLC, Wingate Creek BP.
Motion to approve? Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries.
Thanks, Steve. Item number thirty-five is a public hearing regarding a junk dealer's license for American Metal and Paper Recycling Incorporated, American Metal and Paper Recycling Incorporated, nine thirty-five Sheenour Drive. Anyone from the public, any one of you hundreds and hundreds of people from the public interested in making a comment regarding American metal and paper?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number thirty-six is granting of a junk dealer's license for American Metal and Paper Recycling Incorporated at nine thirty-five Sheenour Drive.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item thirty-seven is a public hearing regarding a junk dealer's license for Quincy Recycle Paper Incorporated, Quincy Recycle, twenty-two thirty, Stonebridge Circle. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item thirty-eight is the granting of a junk dealer's license, junk dealer license renewal for Quincy Paper Recycling Incorporated, Quincy Recycle, twenty-two thirty, Stonebridge Circle.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number thirty-nine is an ordinance creating section twelve point oh one, parent twelve, criminal history information search. My presentation tonight by Chief of Police Ken Moeller. Good evening again.
Good evening. Very quickly, this is more of an administrative requirement. The state requires us to have a ordinance in order for us to conduct criminal checks for people for non-criminal reasons like our license checks and employment and different things like that. So this ordinance would cover that. And we found out in a recent audit, we didn't have one, and the state required us to have it.
A little housekeeping?
That's it.
Gotcha.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number forty is a report by Alderman Jenkins regarding the library board meeting.
All right. It was a super exciting meeting. We had our annual election of officers and fortunately for everybody, they all agreed to continue in their service. So the President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer all remain the same, and we thank them for their service. Then the other big portion that we began talking about, we'll continue to talk about over the next couple of months, is the Wisconsin Department of Education passed Wisconsin Library Standards. This needs to go through passing of the monarch system, and it'll be passed by the individual boards. But we're interested in if these are requirements, or if they're just suggestions and how that's going to affect our board. Because if they say, well, you're mandated to have materials at a certain level, and we don't fund that, you know, how is that going to go into play? So we're going to continue that conversation as we learn more about it.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Item number forty-one, a report by Alderman Christian regarding the Community Cable TV meeting.
Community TV met on May eighth. We discussed a few items. Most importantly, and I think it's good that everybody is aware of this, but our social media presence has been at an all-time high and for good reason. The folks at Community TV have really implemented some new tactics, techniques, and desires to reach out to the public in a different way than we have in the past. We hired a social media expert, part-time expert. Her name is Alyssa, and she's doing a wonderful job. Back in November, just for an example, our Facebook status is, I don't know if everybody is familiar with Facebook, but the idea is to get likes on Facebook. Prior to Alyssa arriving, the city of West Bend in total had about two thousand total likes and what they call eleven new followers per week on an average. Since the time that Alyssa started, she has increased the number of likes to over four thousand four hundred and fifty. So she's over-doubled the amount of likes that our city pages have in just six months, and that far surpasses everything that we had been doing up to that point. Instead of ten new followers per week, we have over a hundred new followers per week. So this is a really wonderful way to get information out to the public, and it proves that the public is interacting with the things that the city is putting out there as far as entertainment around the city, anything that Public Works has to put out, you know, items that we might be considering here for Common Council. So it's a really great way to interact with our constituents and the citizens of West Bend, and it's proving to be very, very beneficial to all involved. So I just wanted to report back that that's a very significant improvement. And, you know, I guess just the other number that they would want me to say is in April of two thousand eighteen alone, we have five hundred and sixty new followers for the city of West Bend's social media pages. So they're doing a wonderful job there, and that's a testament to everybody in there, Patty, Chris, Tom, the style of videography that they're doing, the pictures, the interviews. It's another thing that some of you have already been involved in, and they are going around and interviewing different departments in the city, and that's proving to be a lot of fun and informative for what the people here at City Hall are doing. They've also created a Business of the Month feature, which highlights businesses throughout the community. They've been getting a lot of very positive feedback from that. Some of the businesses, the Exclusive Company, for example, told Patty that the Business of the Month feature that featured the Exclusive Company created what he calls a social media frenzy for the Exclusive Company. So they were just ecstatic in it, again, proving that we're working hand-in-hand with the businesses and the community and in a very positive way. So they're also working on a Teacher of the Year program, which will highlight, you know, some local teachers. And I just am awfully proud of the work that they're doing. The quality and the content has increased dramatically, and it's proving. So thank you to the Community TV folks for their wonderful work. I don't know if anybody has any questions or thoughts regarding that. Go ahead.
I was just curious. So as far as the social media growth, is any of that forced or paid, or has it all been organic?
All organic.
Awesome.
Anybody else? Good deal. Tell them, congrats.
Absolutely.
You again. Forty-two is a report by Alderman Christian regarding the RDA meeting.
The RDA met on May eighth as well. One item to discuss, and that was the approval of the offer to purchase city-owned land in TIF number five. The tax key is two nine one point one 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 nine point one three two point zero zero two five, and we did approve that.
Question that, did you guys discuss, or maybe Ian and Jay can talk about it, if the sale goes through, is that the last piece of RDA property? Do you know? I think it is. And if so, do we, is the RDA, assuming that goes away if they don't own any property anymore?
We talked about it a little bit during the RDA meeting, and we do believe it's the last piece. I don't think that they go away at this point. It still probably makes sense that they're around in case there's another piece of property that comes up that is of interest for the city.
And what, give me the quick history on it. The RDA did what? Were they able to access some different funding back in the day when they were put together? Was that why they actually owned property?
Yep. Kirk Emmerich, who's been awesome and been around for a long time, although he doesn't claim to be the expert because he wasn't the chair for the entire time that he served, provided a lot of history at that meeting, and we had some new members that Mike included that were learning from him about the history of the RDA and how they were able to assist the city in purchasing some of the blighted property and really instigate that downtown change. Good stuff.
Any other questions?
That is all.
Thanks, Mike.
You bet.
Finally, item number forty-three is a report by either Alderman Chevalier or Caston regarding the Tourism Commission meeting.
Yep. So we have two brand-new members from the Alderman staff that are on the Tourism Commission, being myself and Alderman Chevalier. So Kerry Winklebauer gave us a tutorial on how those tourism funds are allocated, went through the municipal code on it, just to get us level set. And then we went through the grant application for tourism-based nonprofits that can apply for some grants for two thousand eighteen, and approved that grant application form, so.
And that is new for us, right? This is the first time that we're really opening it up to other organizations that could impact tourism. I think we'll remember that the funds currently have been earned, I'll say, by MOA, by the Chamber, and then the city of West Bend kept a chunk, and we've, the Tourism Committee allocated twenty thousand dollars this year.
Correct. We can, we can give up to that amount. We may not give any. We may give, you know, ten thousand. It's hard to say. So wait, see what the grant applications look like.
And for the newbies, the tourism funds are generated for every hotel room in town that's rented. I think it's eight dollars or eight percent. Eight percent of the room night is charged. The city collects those funds and then can distribute those out. State law changed just within the last couple of years is why we've got this new committee. But for the first time, we're saying, hey, community, if you've got an event that you think is going to put more heads in beds, create some tourism, create some overnight stays, which will then help to replenish the funds, come forward. It's not meant to be a forever thing. It's, I think, intended to give a new event kind of a kickstart if they need a couple of years to get fully up to speed and self-supportive. But it's a pretty creative way to use those funds, and I'm, good luck to the committee. Any other questions? And being no further business before the Common Council, I adjourn. Are there any announcements tonight? John?
Yep. Just next week, Monday is Memorial Day. The parade, I believe, is at, kicks off at nine thirty and at the old courthouse. So I'd like to see everybody out there.
Thanks, Sean. It's always a fun day, especially if it's seventy-five and sunny, not fifty and raining. I've got one quick one. A little bird told me that Fire Chief Jerry Kudek is being recognized as UWWC's Alumni of the Year. So congratulations to the fire chief. And with that, I'll say good night, everyone. Have a good evening.